Good afternoon. The Committee of the Whole is called to order. Before we begin, let's go over the rules of engagement. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel with each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded for more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak even if all the time yielded was not used. After the completion of the two rounds of questions, panelists will be excused until called upon for the next bill up for discussion. Amendments to each bill will be entertained after the two rounds of questions. After we complete the amendments on the bill, we'll proceed to the next bill. Materials for the Committee of the Whole are in the shared session Google Drive folder labeled 9.28.21 Committee of the Whole. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email 36glsession@gmail.com. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. After we complete the amendments to each bill, then I will entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. Madam Speaker?
Thank you. On the third round where you will be accepting amendments, can I also offer or suggest or amend that motion so that we can, if we don't have amendments, just speak on the bill in general during that round as well? Because otherwise it's just questioning and we have no opportunity, just speak on the bill.
Okay, there's a motion to allow for the third round which is used for amendments that if that round can also be used for members to speak on the bill. Any objections to that motion? Seeing none, motion carries. All right, now I'd like to recognize Senator Shelton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move that, I move to place Bill 130-36LS below Bill 121-36, so set it aside to come after Bill 121.
So just to clarify, is this a motion to reorder how we discuss the bills in the Committee of the Whole and make Bill 121-36COR the first bill that we discuss followed by Bill 130 as the second bill to be discussed?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call upon the panel guests and for the Sergeant at Arms to swear in the panel guests and for each guest to introduce him or herself.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Chair, you're all under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you, Sergeant at Arms. And now I'd like to begin at the left end of the table, working our way down, if each member of the panel can introduce themselves and who they are representing.
Good afternoon. My name is Lillian Perez Basadas. I represent Guam Memorial Hospital.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Guerrero. I'm the Office of Finance and Budget.
Good afternoon, Senators. Edward Byrne from the Department of Administration.
Good afternoon. My name is Tina Garcia, representing Guam Economic Development Authority.
Thank you, members of the panel. Now I will recognize the primary sponsor of the measure, Senator Joe Son-Agustin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce that Bill 121-36COR is an act to add a new chapter, 83, to Title 12, Division 2 Guam Code annotated, relative to the design, build, finance, lease, transfer, and maintenance of the Guam Century 21st Century Healthcare Center, which shall be called the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center Construction Act of 2021. Mr. Chair and my colleagues, good afternoon. It's been quite a journey with Bill 121-36COR. It has gone through multiple discussions through public hearings, discussions in our June session, and in virtual meetings with our fellow island leaders and stakeholders as we deliberated the situation and urgent needs of our healthcare agencies, who are in dire need of new facilities. This bill is a financing mechanism that allows the Governor of Guam to jumpstart the construction of a healthcare campus that provided home to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the Department of Public Health Social Services, and the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. Reminder, my colleagues and to the people of Guam, this bill is a financing mechanism, nothing else. During our last June session, the panel members who sat before us informed us about the importance of Bill 121-36COR. We cannot wait any longer to address the issues of our healthcare facilities. This bill does not harm our government nor the people of Guam. It provides a safeguard for our island and our people as we are far beyond the years that our only hospital and healthcare agencies should have been provided a proper, safe, and modern facility. Our governor, Lillian Guerrero, and our congressman, Delegate Mike Siniklas, has also been doing their best to acquire federal resources to help fund the construct and construct of our new healthcare center. Madam, Mr. Chair, as we've seen through this pandemic, the importance of providing the people of Guam with the facilities most crucial to battling the pandemic is so clear. We are facing another surge of increased hospitalization due to COVID-19. Our hospital, healthcare workers, and staff are trying their ultimate best to provide our people with the best quality care in a facility that lacks structural and environmental safety. Our Department of Public Health and Social Service is trying their best to accommodate all our public health and social needs without an adequate home. Unless, our Behavioral Health and Wellness Center has been doing their best to provide mental health services without barely any room to grow. Also to clarify, Bill 121-36 authorized for a single request of a proposal that will be generated from the program study of each healthcare agency and only one contract will be given by GITA to one contractor slash developer. Also, this bill authorized a lease back period that will not exceed 40 years as GITA will ensure all financing opportunities are available for our government such as financing through HUD and USDA for the construction of the Guam's 21st Century Healthcare Center. If funding is a concern, we must understand that federal funds that the government will acquire will lessen the cost of construction of the Guam 21st Century Healthcare Center. Mr. Chairman and my colleagues, it is right for us to ensure we are providing for the most basic needs of our community without jeopardizing the safety of those involved. It has been a long time for us to realize such an opportunity to enhance our healthcare facilities. I look forward to the discussion in the Committee of the Whole on this measure and ask for the affirmative support of this body to pass this bill. Cesar Esmasi, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Son-Agustin. Okay, I'd also like to recognize we do have a member of the, another member of the panel who has joined us. If we can have that member of the panel sworn in and also introduce herself for the record.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, you affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Mr. Chair, you may proceed.
Could you also please introduce yourself for the record?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Bertha Tyren. I'm the Program Coordinator for the Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Senator Tiedegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, where is DRT? I mean, this money is coming from earned income tax credit, you know, EITC, and we don't have the main, you know, individual who oversees this funding. Are they coming or?
I believe they've been contacted. I don't know the status of whether or not they'll be able to make it at this time. I'll find out and we'll get that information back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because like I said, this money is under Department of Revenue and Taxation who receives this funding, so it's important to have them here. I mean, they would be the bulk of our questions. Thank you.
All right, at this time, let me take a moment's recess to determine the whereabouts of DRT.
Committee of the Whole is called back to order. Senator Tiedegui, on your request for information reference to EITC, I'm going to ask Mr. Guerrero to respond to that, but DRT has been contacted, but he may be able to give you the answer that you're looking for. All right? So, Mr. Guerrero, if you can go ahead and respond to her question reference to the EITC.
Okay, Senator Tiedegui, I'm going to basically give you a synopsis, an overall synopsis of how the 35 million came about and being held in advance and reserved basically for the hospital. In the FY '22 budget, we appropriated, well, there's a, we had, we estimated $55.8 million to be received in EITC tax. Of that 55, we set aside 35 million for the hospital and 5 million for DOC, New Prison, as kind of seed money. So as we move forward in FY '22, we're anticipating to receive from the federal government a reimbursement amount of no less than $55.8 million for EITC that we plan, the Governor of Guam plans, to spend to cover EITC tax payments. Okay, so the 55 that you see in the law, because that amount is already being technically paid by the federal government, the only difference is, the only thing we don't know at this point is when we're going to get this money. Would it be in advance money? And if it's in advance money, I'm sure it can come in anytime before October through December. We can just consider advance for the purposes of paying tax refunds simply because I believe tax refunds don't start to be paid out until January. If it comes after January, and again, it's just a matter of timing, portion of what money we receive can be considered either advance or in a form of reimbursement. So for now, until we hear anything from the federal government in terms of how we're going to receive this money, what we did it, we took the approach in the budget to set aside the 35 million out of the 55.8 mil for the hospital.
Senator Tiedegui, did that generally answer your question?
Mr. Chair, and for the body, I sent a letter to OFB asking some questions regarding earned income tax credit. Before I sent it, I also spoke with Department of Revenue and Taxation for some information, and it seems the stories are both different from each other regarding earned income tax credit and what tax year this reimbursement is going to fall under. Some believe this is going to be for tax year 2020, and another person believes it's going to be for tax year 2021. Based on U.S. Public Law 117, the explanation of how this money is going to be applied and when it's going to receive talks about a calendar year versus a tax year. It seems that we're getting different, I'm getting different information. I have a letter from the OFB director, not really explaining, you know, if it is tax year 2020 or 2021, but to have both REVEN tax year and OFB to come in and answer these questions that we have, then that's the only way we're going to be able to put two and two together to see if it does match, because we're getting one story from one agency and then one from OFB. The questions that I have, Mr. Chair, I need REVEN tax here so that if she's saying something different, Steve can then counteract it by, you know, giving his opinion. But we're going to find there's going to be two different opinions here with regards to this funding. And 55.8 million is an awful lot of money.
We're waiting for DRTs to show up. Have you shared your letter with the colleagues here as you're speaking about a letter you received, but you're, I don't know if everybody else got it?
Yeah, I actually had OFB, if he could CC the response. I CC'd you, Mr. Chair. I CC'd the speaker. I CC'd REVEN tax as well as Mike Siniklas's office as well with my letter, but the response from OFB only came back to me. It was not CC'd back to others, but I made that initiative, sir, to CC you, the response from OFB. Now I'll be happy to share this letter with my colleagues.
I would appreciate it if you would.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because I understand how this fund is coming. All right, we're going to, we'll take a quick recess while you get a copy of that letter and circulate it among all the colleagues so everybody has a copy of it. And also we'll provide a copy to the panel.
Committee of the whole is called back to order. We are gonna set Bill 121 aside. We will address 130. And I would ask the author of the bill, or the co-sponsor of the bill, to please introduce the bill, and then we can move forward. The panel will only be Mr. Byrne and probably the OFB. Steve wants to stick around anyway, he's with me. So, the two will stay, and I'll ask the other panel members, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Tyrone, and Ms. Passadas. Thank you, and we'll see you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. All right, Senator Shelton, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the panel for being here this afternoon. I apologize for the confusion, and thank you for accommodating all of us. Mr. Chair, this is Bill number 130-36, introduced by... Do I need a motion to pass 121 on file?
Yes, or could I get a motion for that, then?
Mr. Chair, I move to set aside Bill 121 at this time.
Are there any objections to that motion? There being none, so ordered. Senator Shelton, we are now at Bill 130.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Bill 130-36, introduced by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes and Senator James C. Moylan, is an act to add a new section 13.2 to Chapter 1 of Division 1 Title V Guam Code Annotated relative to establishing the Guam World War II Reconciliation Act of 2021 to compensate claims of the Greatest Generation of Guam for the atrocities suffered during the World War II occupation of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this before we begin discussions. As you know, our elders have suffered immense injuries and losses because of a war we had no say in and have a right to redress, a right to be made whole. More than 700 claimants and their descendants who have missed the deadline to apply for reparations have already signed a petition requesting for the extension. It is because of them that we must continue to do what we can to ensure they get the recognition they deserve. On January 3, 2020, Governor Lou Leon Guerrero signed into law a local war claims payment program bill. On January 24, the local application period for war claims payments opened, and just five days later, on January 29...
Senator Shelton, have you moved yet to accept the substitute? I think you might be reading on the substitute, and I want to make sure we're...
Mr. Chair, I move to accept Bill 130-36 LS as substituted in the Committee of the whole.
Are there any objections on that motion? There being none, so ordered. Please continue, Senator Shelton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I was saying, on January 24, the local application period for the war claims payments opened, and just five days later, on January 29, the first group of war survivors received their advanced war claims payments. It was through this local program that over 1,000 of our war survivors have lived to see checks they never thought would come. We all know that this was more than paying a long overdue debt or getting credit for finally reaching this point. This was the first step to finally heal old wounds. While no amount of money, Mr. Chair, or material compensation can atone for the pains of the past, it is the recognition that is long overdue. Recognition too many of our manamku are still waiting for. We cannot turn the page or close this painful chapter in Guam's history until every single war survivor receives the justice they are owed. Under Bill 130-36, qualified war survivors and their descendants are defined by U.S. Public Law 144-328. They are who have not been compensated by the Foreign Claims Settlement Commission, may receive a locally funded payment consistent with U.S. federal law, and this can be done in months, not years. Upon enactment, the administration will have up to 30 calendar days to transmit a plan for the payment of locally adjudicated claims. Bill 130-36 further authorizes the governor to transfer such funds as necessary to pay what is rightfully owed to our war survivors. Our survivors are here, and they are waiting, but they cannot wait much longer. Every day, we hesitate to try to implement. Blocked by needless red tape, we lose more and more of our precious manamku. Though Guam was liberated in 1944, 77 years ago, the memories of pain and suffering continue to linger. Mr. Chair and colleagues, we made right the wrongs of the past before, and we have the opportunity to do so again with the passage of Bill 130-36. I ask for your support of this measure, and I look forward to the discussion today. Mr. Chair, Sidhuas Massey for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. My colleagues will now begin the rounds of questions. We'll begin with Senator Pito. Do you have any questions on Bill 130?
Mr. Chair, it's not a question, it's a point of interest that I wanted to put out coming from the vice speaker. And if I can, I want to speak on Bill 130-36 LS in Arbenakula.
Okay.
And the vice speaker asked me to speak on behalf of that in our own language.
Well, right now, we're on questions now, so let's finish off the round of questions. And as proposed by the speakers, on our third round, which is basically when we're in the amendment section, then you can speak instead of asking questions, you can speak on the bill. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Senator Blas, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess the question would be to Mr. Burns. Mr. Burns, how much do we anticipate to... Since the Federal War Claims Commission Foreign Settlement Act has been, for all intents and purposes, adjudicated, what is the amount that we anticipate to be... to get back from them in the amounts taken from our Section 30 for that account? Or are we going to get any of that money back?
Okay, thank you, Senator. No, we're not going to get any of that money back. That was the money that Congress used, basically, because they had no other funding, to fund the war claims payments. However, as you know, a few weeks ago, we received 76 million in Section 30 fund money, which... which I think more than suggests that the federal government has taken and satisfied whatever claims they need out of the previous Section 30 funds availability, and therefore there will be no further restrictions on Section 30 receipts because of the war claims. Basically, the federal government has completed their program, and that's what's caused the need for this bill, because these claimants are not in their program.
Okay. So, wouldn't it be prudent that since they took our money to pay their debt, that we receive some accounting of, first off, how much was taken from Section 30 and how much they had dispersed? Is there any plans to be able to do that?
Yes, sir. But it really only just happened, so we're still waiting for a full accounting of the Section 30.
So, there is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Do we... Is there any way to anticipate what that... If there was any monies left overs, how much that money... How much that could be? Do you know any indication at this time?
Senator, I don't think there'll be any money left over, because all they did was stop deducting it from the Section 30 money that we were due to receive.
Wasn't the law basically saying anything in excess of 60 mil annually?
No, that's the... That was the floor for us to receive. But if they've paid out all the claims that they have adjudicated, there'll be no further reason for them to make any further deductions.
So, what you're saying right now is there is no money for... If this plan was to be implemented, there is no funding for it right now?
No, this bill would have to find the funding.
This bill is saying that she's got to find it?
Well, yes. I mean, that's true of almost every bill.
But, right now, there is no money?
No.
And we need to have this straight, frank, forward conversation...
There's nothing set aside for these claims, that's correct.
So, it's zero, right now?
Yeah, nothing is zero, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Tiedigley, you are recognized. Well, Madam Chair, it's kind of hard, since you're sitting back there, maybe you can answer it. I don't think there's anything in the rules that does not answer it, since you're representing Bill 130. I have a question to the author, which means... Which is, what is an implementation plan? And why doesn't Bill 130 define such a term to avoid potential legal concerns?
Thank you for the question. I cannot respond to you as the chair, so we can take a recess at this time. The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. The question will be answered by the co-sponsor of the measure, Senator Moylan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the question as well. What the bill does is basically gives the authority to the governor to submit a plan within 30 days of the enactment of this into law. And then, from there, that plan comes before the legislature, and we have 30 days to review. And if we don't, then it just moves forward. But we can make changes, we can adjust, but then we would be able to have the opportunity to review the plan. So, that's my point. That's the point of the answer of the question. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Tiedigley, you are still recognized.
Well, it sounds to me that there is no plan. It's something that sounds like this bill was just thrown together real quick at the last minute, to throw it out there, without any type of implementation that would put together to have this bill bring some kind of guidance. If the administration... I mean, this body here puts rules and regulations together that we pass, and we do it because we want to make sure it's fair, fairly done across the board. My concern is that now, if we give it to the governor to do... You never know who's going to be first in line to receive this funding. And right now, there is no funding at this point. Mr. Byrne, how much local funds have been used for advanced war claims pursuant to Public Law 35-61?
If I can repeat what I said during the budget hearings, we locally paid out 12.8 million in war claims. And I, you know, just to pick up on the point you just made, is we didn't give anybody priority as to when they were paid out. We waited for people who were entitled to be paid out to make claims, and we paid them out at that time till we exhausted the list of people that were making claims.
Yep, those that were adjudicated through the federal government. That, you know, things can be turned around once it comes here at home locally, and not really, you know, you're coming into an election year next year, so you've got to be very cautious. And the other question I have, Mr. Burns, is Public Law 35-61. They said that no funding, if I'm not mistaken, during the budget hearing, that no money was put into that account?
I think there was a general misunderstanding of how the process worked. We paid out the money, and we got money back from the federal government, so...
So, you never put money into the account at all to set aside money to pay out these war claims, these early releases? So, you just used, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Byrne, you used general fund money? And then, when you got reimbursed, you just put it back into the general fund, into an account? Anything in this legislation, it says, if I'm not mistaken, depositing it into this account, what stops you from not depositing, like what happened last time when this came up to be paid out earlier for the war claims?
Well, this is a retrospective way of looking at it. The money was paid out, and the money was received, and the money was...
But it never went into the account that was created?
Well, in effect, it was, because the money was paid out by the general fund, which created a deficit in that account, and that deficit was made good when the money came in from the federal government.
Right, but what I'm saying, that no... You told us that no money went into that fund. It was just paid out through the general fund, but not the war claims fund that was created in Public Law 35-61. It's, you know, there's nothing in this legislation that's strong language to ensure that that happens in this legislation. I'll reserve the remaining for my time.
I don't think I did say that no money went into the fund.
We'll pull up the recording, and I'll make sure I pull it up. Thank you, I'll wait for the second round.
Thank you, Senator Tiedigley. Senator Ada, do you have any questions for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Byrne, how long would a plan take to implement? I mean, on the bill, you see it says 30 days. Would it take 30 days to implement the plan? Or are we using a cookie-cutter effect as to what was done federally to mirror that
Well, yeah. The previous plan, if you like, had to be agreed with the federal government, and there was an MOU with the federal government that was agreed between us as to how we could carry it out. If it's a local plan, and we don't have to satisfy that particular requirement, I don't see why it shouldn't be done in 30 days.
So, then we would be able... You'd be able to implement the plan sooner than 30 days? Or would it take the entire 30 days to implement it?
I think with respect, it would take 30 days, because apart from anything else, we have a whole lot of other programs going on, and we don't want to stop all those programs and just advance this one. We want to advance them all at the same time.
And who would be putting this program... Who would be putting this plan together? Would it be just DOA or DOA BBMR, Revantax? Who would be... Who do you assume would be at the table putting this plan together?
I'm assuming that it will principally be DOA and BBMR with the governor's office.
I see. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just wanted to inquire, I mean, it's, of course, a situation here where funds are always going to be an issue of concern, but what are the potential sources of funding that could be looked at? Are we looking at, once again, taking funds out of Section 30 to be able to provide any additional claimants that have yet to have their cases reviewed? I assume the intent behind this bill is to do it at a local level to hopefully help facilitate that, but are those possible options or any other options? Because the bill says that the governor will also be left to look at other forms of funding to provide funding for this compensation for those that have not had the opportunity that are eligible. So, I just wanted to get some feedback from you with regards to that, Mr. Byrne.
Well, thank you, Senator. Ultimately, the general fund is responsible for anything that another fund isn't responsible for, so you can reasonably conclude that the general fund will be affected, unless language is put in this bill to change that. You know, there's no actual language in what I'm reading that actually says the general fund will be responsible, but by default, it would be.
Is it a possibility? Have the administration discussed taking funds from the reimbursement from Section 30 and extracting it from that, or any other discussions?
Well, indeed, that's what...
For potential funding sources?
That's what the governor suggested in April, is that Section 30 funding be used in order to identify funds for this. Of course, Section 30 funds are basically general fund money.
Yes, of course.
But it is a specific identification, and that's what the governor was suggesting.
I know it was asked earlier, but do we have a general idea of how much we might be talking about? A general figure of potentially those that were here that have yet to file, that may still be alive, that can file? Do we have a general idea of what amount we may be looking at?
The fiscal note, Senator, came up with a figure of 6.1 million.
Well, it's not... 6.1 million is not an insurmountable amount, certainly assuming we are able to identify, or certainly, maybe we should specify, it comes from Section 30, because there, I guess, maybe is a view that if we do it from Section 30, somehow the federal government is actually paying the bill, even though they otherwise would be paying this money to us, irrelevant of the war claims. I just want to make sure we don't set ourselves up in a situation of making any false promise to our people, particularly our elderly, that, you know, I mean, I think we all agree the one year was not a reasonable period of time for everyone to probably be notified and filed, but I think we want to make sure that the funds are there and that we have an ability to properly execute this process so that they are compensated. So, I appreciate the clarification, but I guess when we have time to comment on the bill, I'll further comment, but I appreciate, Mr. Byrne, your response to my questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I think there was a question posed to me earlier on. As the author, I'd just like to elaborate, as one of the co-sponsors answered the question of what does it mean that the administration... That this bill authorizes a plan to be put together? And basically, the goal is to allow the administration to put the most efficient plan together, understanding the capabilities and responsibilities of executive agencies in order to expedite the consideration and approval of claims not filed through the federal process. So, implementation... This implementation plan is for the administration to come up with a mechanism for us to pay out a claims process. And hopefully, as Mr. Byrne said, that it will be 30 days or less. They have to do it within 30 days, but that is the time that we are allowing them through this bill to develop that plan. I wanted to speak on that. And, yes, the governor did state in April that she will ask that we specifically identify the use of Section 30 funds for this purpose, and so that is the funding source I think that we're still hoping for, looking at in this bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a question for Director Byrne. So, in the implementation of the 2016 Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act, do you know, in the implementation of it, were there any claims made by Chamoros that are living in the States?
Yes, Senator, there were.
Okay. So, in this Bill 130-36, it states, "Payment of locally adjudicated war claims," but it doesn't specify what the term "local" means. So, perhaps this question is for the co-sponsor? Would that be Senator Moylan or Senator Shelton? Are you one of the co-sponsors? Okay, okay. So, this is a question for Senator Shelton. So, is it the intent of the bill to limit the claims to those living on island by putting in the term "local," locally adjudicated war claims?
Senator Shelton, do you yield to the question?
No, the intent of the bill is not to limit it to people only living on the island. It is... It is a... It means that... It doesn't preclude any person who's not living on Guam, but this is meant to say a GOV-Guam war claims process, a locally adjudicated process, not to mean only local to Guam, the people who can apply, but it's describing the adjudication process of the government of Guam.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. I believe, Senator Moylan, you have something you can add to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just to expand a little bit more, but correct, we're adjudicating it here. The claimants, wherever they're coming from, they're not adjudicating it. We are. Guam is. That's what means locally adjudicated, and I believe we've done this previously as well. So, the system is here, that means local. It's not adjudicated in Washington, D.C. by the U.S. Treasury Department. That's the difference. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to be extra clear...
Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. To be clear, the intent is to capture all those who experienced World War II during the occupation of Guam, especially those who missed the previous federal deadline. So, that's who we're trying to capture, ensure that we are bringing them justice through this locally adjudicated program.
So this is a, this is a question for Senator Shelton. So is it the intent of the bill to limit the claims to those living on island by putting in the term "local," locally adjudicated war claims?
Senator Shelton, do you yield to the question?
No, the intent of the bill is not to limit it to people only living on the island. It is, it is a, it means that, it doesn't preclude any person who's not living on Guam, but this is meant to say a Gov-Guam war claims process, a locally adjudicated process, not to mean only local to Guam, the people who can apply, but it's describing the adjudication process of the government of Guam.
Thank you Senator Shelton. I believe Senator Moreland, you have something you can add to that question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just to expand a little bit more, but correct, we're adjudicating it here. The claimants, wherever they're coming from, they're not adjudicating it. We are. Guam is. That's what we, what means locally adjudicated. And I believe we've done this previously as well. So the system is here, that means local. It's not adjudicated in Washington DC by the US Treasury Department. That's the difference. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just to be extra clear-
Senator Shelton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. To be clear, the intent is to capture all those who experienced World War II during the occupation of Guam, especially those who missed the previous federal deadline. So that's who we're trying to capture, ensure that we are bringing them justice through this locally adjudicated program.
Senator Perez, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, but I think in the language of the bill itself, that could be improved. Thank you. Another question. So as more survivors pass on and some descendants of survivors file claim on their behalf, how are the descendants defined in this process? And this question is for Senator Shelton.
Senator Shelton, do you yield to the question?
Thank you very, excuse me. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I think those are some parameters that will be developed by the administration in the plan that they are being tasked with. The administration will be able to come up with the plan.
Senator Perez?
Okay, great, that's great. Again, another potential amendment. So this question is for OFB, Steve Guerrero. Is it your understanding that the 76 million that came in has already been appropriated for the year 2022?
The 76 million Senator you're referring to is part of the FY22 budget.
Okay, so the follow-up question perhaps is, so you know, I'm in support of this, I'm supportive of compensating all Chamoros who have suffered, who have been on Guam during the war, but I just want to clarify, so the 76 million has already been appropriated and divvied up, so where would the source of money be to pay for the claims?
You're talking about the actual payout for the war reparations?
Yes, because the 76 million that was earmarked or at least stated in the budget, the last, the budget that we just passed, has already been divvied up into, you know, Gov-Guam agencies. So where would the money come from to pay?
Senator, it's my understanding that over the last five or six years, the federal government basically has been deducting X amount of dollars every year to set aside out of the Section 30 monies to put into this war reparation fund. The 76 million that you're referring to in the FY22 is not money set aside to pay for war reparations. My understanding again is that as of FY21, the total amount required for set aside for the war reparations have been met. That is my understanding. And I believe that amount was something to the tone of maybe 40 million dollars. I can check with Director Burns, he can, you know, kind of clarify that. But going forward, after FY2021, to my understanding, the federal government is no longer deducting or holding any amount out of the Section 30 monies for the war reparation fund.
Okay, just a clarification, so there's 40 million dollars in the US Treasury to pay for war claims? Is that correct?
That is my understanding, but maybe if I can refer to Director Burns, he can probably clarify that a little bit more.
Okay. Yes, Director Burns, if you can provide additional information, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you Senator. I believe that the US Treasury estimated the amount needed to pay the war claims. It was like 42 million. And that amount was over the course of, I think, three years, if I remember correctly, was the amount that was effectively withheld from the Section 30 money that was remitted to us so that process could be funded.
Okay, so what's the process of extracting that money if it's in the Department of Treasury? Let's say they end their responsibility to pay it out in the end of this year. Does that money get returned back to Guam and then how is that money then dispersed? Or who holds, who holds that money?
Well, all they've done, as best we can understand, from having this higher amount of 76 million given to us a few weeks ago, was they stopped withholding any further funds and just simply remitted the gross amount, if you like, of the Section 30 funding.
And do you have an accurate account of how much the Department of Treasury has currently?
No, that's something the Treasury didn't share with us.
Okay, so potentially that could be the source of money then to pay the claims?
Well, it's possible, but I mean, I'd be very surprised if it was a whole lot of money because, you know, the Treasury is pretty good at budgeting, so I'm pretty certain that whatever they budgeted was in fact the amount that it eventually cost.
How would you get that information? Is it possible to get that information?
We could certainly ask the Treasury. I'm not sure that they're bound to give it to us, but we can certainly ask.
So why would they not be able to give that information? I don't understand.
Well, I don't think they're on any obligation to give it to us because it's a federal program. You know, it's federal money, it's a federal program. They don't owe us an explanation, but they might be prepared to share one.
So the memorandum of understanding or agreement did not include that condition?
No, the memorandum of understanding revolved around how we were going to get funds repaid for us from what we paid out locally.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Senator Perez. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, thank you for being here this afternoon. So the program on Guam where the governor paid out war claims was pursuant to public law 35-61, is that correct?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So that law created, well, it authorized the payment and to transfer funds available from the general fund to pay the adjudicated claims. And it also created the fund, of course, and it, in subsection E, it says, "All money reimbursed to the government of Guam for payment of claims as authorized in subsection D of this section shall be deposited in the fund." Didn't you say earlier that you received reimbursement for the payments that the governor had made to, for war claims?
Yes, I did.
All right, and, but you're saying that there is no money in this account?
Well, the, the way the legislation was written, and I think the administration was on record as saying it at the time, is kind of backwards. We created a fund and created, when the money was paid out, there was a deficit in the fund, and then when the money was received, the fund was made good. And that seems to me an appropriate way to act.
An appropriate way?
Yes.
So, so what is the problem? So the, there was supposed to be a fund created, you were supposed to transfer money into that fund, you were supposed to use that money to pay war claims, which, which was done, war claims was paid, and it, it says that any money reimbursed to the government of Guam for payment of claims shall be deposited in the fund. And if we were reimbursed for payment of claims, the question is why was the money not deposited in the fund?
I think Senator, it was. The fund had a deficit when the money was paid out and that deficit was made good when the refund was, was received. So the fund now is balanced and that-
So the money was put into the fund? You're saying the reimbursement was put into the fund?
Yes, because the fund had a minus number.
Okay, so, the other section of the same law says that the fund shall be exempt from the governor's transfer authority and any funds remaining in the fund shall be subject to legislative appropriation. So if the money was reimbursed, it should have been deposited in the fund according to the law and it should have remained there, subject to legislative appropriation. And I know you're trying to tell us that there was a deficit balance in the fund, but not if the law was followed and the money was transferred to the fund. That's a positive balance. If the governor did what it says in subsection C, transfer sums available from the general fund to this special fund or this war claims fund to pay the adjudicated claims, and then when the money was, and used that money, paid out claims, and when the money was reimbursed by the Treasury to Guam, it should all still be in that fund. And it seems like a, but you know, you're telling us now that there is no money in the fund and I'm, I'm looking at the, because the reimbursement amount equal to the amount that you paid, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you're, did you say today that the governor has promised to transfer Section 30 funds into this war claims fund?
No, Madam Speaker. What I said was, in April, the governor wrote a letter when this bill was initially published suggesting that rather than any other source, Section 30 money should be used to fund this particular program.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. The governor wrote a letter in April when this legislation was initially published suggesting that rather than looking at any other source of funds, Section 30 money should be looked at to provide the funding for this particular program.
Okay, so she's suggesting that we use, that Section 30 funds be used?
That is, that, yes, that was, that was what she wrote.
There's some problem with that. She's authorized to transfer, according to the original law, any amount received from Section 30 for, for this program, to put it into the fund and use it for the program. So I know they asked earlier and there's no set amount or estimate of how much it would need. Did we receive, or are we, will we receive more in Section 30 for FY21? Well, I'm sorry. More than, did they reconcile the Section 30 and are we expecting more than what we have anticipated or appropriated?
We received 76 million, as you know, because that was included in the budget legislation. Any adjustment to that comes from an adjustment of the actual tax receipts, not from any other reason, assuming that, that they have run through all the, all the war claim claims.
No, I mean, well, what about for the prior year adjustments for Section 30?
That could happen either way because of tax reconciliation.
Are you expecting any?
No, I have not been, I've not been advised of any.
All right. Well, could you give us an estimate of how long, if this bill is passed, how long would it take to, to put those funds into this account? The funds necessary for this program? I don't want to create another RISE program where people wait for, you know, a really exorbitant amount of time and, and it, you know, it was a very stressful thing. So how long do you think that that's going to take?
Well, you know, I think you're asking, if I may, kind of paraphrase your question, I think you're asking how long it would take, once the plan is submitted, to actually get these war claims paid.
Well, the money. Is the money available?
Well, the money has to come from, from this, this bill. So the money, if you're using Section 30 money and I-
You've received it already?
We've received it. I refer back to what Mr. Guerrero said earlier, but, you know, in, in any of these programs, and to my knowledge, that includes the RISE program also, there's a lot of administrative work that has to go into setting up the process and the rules and, and that, I believe, is the cause of the gap, and I hate to use the word delay, right, the gap between the idea and the, and the realization.
All right, okay, so the money is available? Money could be transferred immediately?
Madam Speaker, your time is expired.
Thank you, as soon as the plan is ready.
If, if authorized by this bill, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Nelson, you're recognized.
This is Massey, Mr. Chairman. And just a quick comment. I think it's all been, always been perplexing, maybe Mr. Byrne would think this way now, that when we went down this road and discovered that we would be using our own funding necessarily that's refunded to Guam, that at least this round, we're going to go ahead and set up our own program and do it. Do you see it that way?
Yes, I agree Senator. The, you know, the federal program is kind of unique in that, I guess either way, you know, the current people of Guam are being asked to pay for, for these war reparations rather than either the occupying power or the liberating power, but that, that was the decision and that's where we stand.
Certainly, so I'm glad we're at this juncture. I'm just going to go through this to make sure that I see the clear reading and see if you concur, this is how we'll do this, because it seems pretty straightforward. So the implementation basically describes that upon the submission, upon the submission Imagahagang Guahan Implementation Plan, the legislature in Guahan may adopt, reject, or amend the plan in any form of a bill. If after 38 calendar days, legislature in Guahan fails to act on the plan as submitted, the plan shall be deemed adopted. Pretty straightforward, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So one thing I wanted to get to, because I think we've all been kind of asking similar questions, my, as you saw the plan prior or as the federal government was implementing it, did you see, if you had any chance to review, was it a first in, first out? And would that be just what would be expected of Department of Administration administering this plan?
It's kind of hard to say what order the federal government processed those claims in. They actually, on their website, referred to these claims by numbers and the numbers weren't necessarily sequential, which suggests that there was not actually a first in, first out strict application of it, but it, but it was not a process that was really visible to us.
Yeah. So in the event that that's not in the governor's plan, this will be up to us here at the body, but I think that that would probably be an amendment that we would put in. But, Mr. Byrne, under your judicious authority, you would probably see that as being the common way you would implement it, correct?
That would be a very fair way of doing it, yes Senator.
Thank you. I think we, we might probably just amend it, but who knows, the plan may come back that way anyways. So the final thing, Mr. Byrne, so I think we can just be very clear about this bill in particular, when we actually get to what we've kind of been asking you about in terms of the funding, so just to be clear on the section for those who are following along that might, in the public, want to go and read the bill, in 13.203, Authorization to Deposit Funds in the Guam Claims Fund, if we go all the way to B there, it says, "Such funds be insufficient for the implementation of the Guam World War II Reconciliation Act of 2021. Notwithstanding any other provision of law, Imagahagang Guahan is authorized to transfer such sums as may be available to or for the purposes outlined in 13.202 of this article." So essentially, what you've mentioned so far, and I just wanted, for my purpose of clarity, you would use, the governor would use whatever funds available, namely the general fund, to find the monies to execute this program.
There's only basically two sources of funds for this money, the, the general fund or the Section 30 funds, which have actually has been appropriated into the general fund. So I, I don't really think there's much of a choice.
Okay, good enough. And I, and I think, Mr. Byrne, in all fairness, I think our colleagues have asked a really good question and I think this is, this really should be our effort, full force, you know, to, to- good question, and I think this really should be our effort, full force, you know, to communicate with the federal government, the, you know, whether they choose to or not. Because, because as you know, Mr. Byrne, you've done this a number of times. In fact, I think we might have even received some this year of reconciled fundings through Section 30. And those are, you know, monies that may have been missed with regard to federal employees that were not recognized within the period of time and the like. So from time to time, we've had those reconciliations, and they've had no problem communicating with Guam and saying, you know, you will be receiving additional resources coming forward. So I would think, and I just want to put it on your radar, Mr. Byrne, because I think you concur, that if there is a balance in this account for which they withheld to implement their program, which is now our program, that should be remitted to Guam, and if it is, it should be used for this purpose.
Yes, sir. I don't see why not, and we can certainly ask that question, and it's a fair question to ask.
Sí, soy Monsi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Moylan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, thank you as well. So the bill requires the governor to submit a plan to pay war claims to those who failed to meet the deadline. That's all we're doing, right? The war claims have been paid, the war claims have been paid. Now we're just talking about those that missed the deadline. We're not changing anything that was stipulated in 1705B or Public Law 144-328. We're not changing any of those rules or anything. We're just opening it up for those who missed the deadline. So to file a claim under this federal program, correct? That's your understanding, Mr. Byrne?
Yes, Senator.
Thank you. And also, when that plan is submitted, and, Mr. Byrne, have you seen the governor's plan yet, by chance?
The plan hasn't been prepared because it hasn't yet been authorized. And I have a feeling that I will be pretty well involved in preparing it.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Nor have I seen the plan. We need to pass this bill in order for us to see the plan. So that's why there's no plan. So the legislature, then, we're going to get this plan, and we can either adopt it, we can reject it, we can amend it, the plan, and the plan is adopted, and we had to do this in 30 days when we receive it. Otherwise, if we're not taking action, then it's going to, it's going to go into action. So we also have a timeline. The governor has a timeline, we have a timeline as well. And I'm excited to see this plan, which is not yet done, because we had to pass this bill first. But basically, there's a reimbursement from the federal government into the Guam War Claims Fund. And that was created, as you mentioned, through Public Law 3561. The fund exists, okay? And it's authorized to be expended for the payment of war claims pursuant to this act. We're using this fund. This is where the money will come from. This is what the governor is basing her plan off. We're not changing anything.
Yes, that would be the flow of funds, that whatever source is used, it would be used to fund this special fund. It's a kind of quasi-special fund.
Understood. And then the governor finally is authorized to transfer funds available to her from the payment of war claims pursuant to this act. Again, it's something we've done already. So alls we're doing is extending the deadline for those that did, that missed it. We're using an existing system that works, and we're not changing any of the federal requirements at all. It's already there. It's not for us to question, really, but we're just more excited to see this plan. So I'm hoping we can get through this and see the plan. Mr. Byrne?
Yes, yes, exactly. And like you, I was there on the day when the first 16 checks of the previous war claims were paid out. And, you know, I shall never forget the look on some of these claimants' faces.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Okay, we are now on the second round, and we will go to Senator Titegui.
Mr. Chair, I believe it was Senator Pito Trolahi was, if we're following the same route, I don't want to step in front of anybody. Okay.
Senator Pito Trolahi, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Let me just be clear on this particular bill. Bill Number 130-36LS is just to reinstate the war claim to some of the survivors that did not get their, the payment, who did not submit their application. I want to say, however, that this, and I want to speak in the vernacular, because that was asked of me by the vice speaker. "Ben Sahi esti, ben Sahi esti pen komprendi na esti bill, the bill 130-36 po chineni egitiman ma pasi ni war claim." "Zangin ta taita esti ni papet geseta esti na bill." "Ta komprendiha na plano ha esti pa'gun aura. Ti man siguru ifiri ra ti man siguru i gubinota. Ta imanu na patatsuli salapi." "Asosanga ni gubenu na Section 30 money para usa zangin malokan esti na bill. Po shes tigil fa fa xin anzu ni bangat songu ni legislature." "Para ta pasa esti na bill gorpi, da rispesta kontiniu pumipara izina plano. Imadis kukuti ni gubinota. Para ta pasi izu xe ta'utoni munanange salapina." Sí, soy Monsi, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Pito Trolahi. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, I just want to, in the questions I guess asked by the speaker, I just need a little clarification here. There was a fund that was set up based on the previous local law for, to pay out the war claims in advance. Is that correct?
Yes, Senator. In advance is the operative phrase.
Okay. The fund basically operated as a deficit, in the deficit, until you were reimbursed?
Yes, and it came in about, I think, three slices from the federal government.
And what was the total amount of that reimbursement?
12.8 million, as I spoke earlier.
Is that money still in that fund?
No, because the deficit was made good by the federal reimbursement. So it balanced out. Just like the budget balances out, it's a balanced budget.
I understand. I just, but that's why I need that to be clarified, that as of today, if we were to open those books, if we were to open that fund, the balance, or what will show in that fund is zero.
Well, actually, if you, strictly speaking, there would be a tiny little deficit, because the federal government withheld from repayments to us a very small amount. I mean, it was like, I think, like $3,000 of monies that were owed to the federal government by some of the claimants. So we weren't reimbursed exactly 100%. We were reimbursed 99.9% of the money we paid out.
And I ask this question because in this bill, it does contain, there is a provision in this bill that talks about this fund. You have the bill in front of you? Do you have the bill?
Yes, sir. I'm just picking it up.
Yeah. Page four, line four. Just so that I can understand that a little bit clearer, you know, it says subsection 13.203, Authorization to Deposit Funds in the Guam War Claims Fund. Then if you read the language of the bill, it says, "Any monies that were reimbursed by the Department of Treasury shall remain in said fund and is authorized to be expended for the payment of war claims." Can that operative language be used, or is, is there any money to do that?
No, there's no federal money sitting in that fund now, if that's the question you're asking, yeah.
Yeah, and so... And I heard you earlier mention that in order for this to be implemented, what this bill requires is basically, we need a funding source.
Yes, sir.
And the funding source that this bill purports to have is, end of the day, there's no money, because it's already been, it balanced out. The reimbursement, is that correct?
Well, I think this bill contemplates some money being placed into the fund.
Well, I can contemplate that. Can you help me in trying to contemplate where that money is going to come from?
I think that's a matter, you know, the governor has suggested, like I said earlier, that it come from Section 30 funding. You can take a suggestion or not take a suggestion.
And that would be satisfied by subsection B of that section, right?
Well, I'm not actually sure what subsection B exactly means, but I think, I can, my reading of it is this, if maybe that might be helpful, is that at the beginning of this exercise, we're going to prepare a plan, and we're going to determine an estimate for what the total of these claims is going to be.
I just...
But we don't know exactly, and if we undershoot that amount, obviously, we don't want to not pay out the remaining claims, so further monies would have to be put into the fund to liquidate those claims.
Okay. Mr. Guerrero, have you, are you familiar with this fund that was created by Public Law 35-61?
Senator, just by the title of the fund, that's my familiarity with the fund.
Pardon me?
Just the title of the fund, yes, I am familiar with the fund.
In your, in your preparation of the budget, while you're looking through all the different funds, does that fund show activity, or is there money in that fund?
Senator, the only funds we identify in the budget are funds that are revenue generating.
Okay.
This fund is not typically a revenue generating fund. It doesn't draw fees, it doesn't, doesn't have anything in this fund. This basically is, can be construed of two ways. One, a fund that's established and is funded through an appropriation. Or two, monies that are deposited into this fund with no statute as to how these monies are being generated and deposited.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'm asking these questions because, for me, you know, yes, at the end of the day, what we want to do is make sure that there is a process and a way to be able to recompense or to provide compensation to those war survivors who had missed the deadline. I think that we also talked about a plan, and yes, that it requires an implementation of a plan or the creation of a plan to be implemented. However, that plan should also include basically a funding source. And I'm not quite satisfied right now to see whether or not there is a funding source, a viable funding source in this thing. I can, so, you know, I'll wait and listen to, you know, other discussions, because I know that I've only got 16 seconds left. Okay? So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas, and thank you for being mindful of the time. Senator Titegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, I just want to, yes or no, okay? When the Public Law passed last year to pay war claims, allowed to create a fund, created the War Claims Fund, there was money that was placed into that fund, and then when it was time to pay out these war claims, a check was drawn out using that fund to pay out these claimants. Is that true so far?
I'm sorry, Senator, I didn't follow what you were saying.
Okay. In other words, what I'm hearing, Mr. Byrne, here is that the fund was created in the Public Law last year, a fund was created. But I'm hearing from you that no money was ever put into that fund, that the money that you used to pay these claimants out were used from general fund money, money not in the account.
As I said earlier, the general fund is ultimately responsible for all monies being paid out. This, you know, the operation of funds are supposed to be self-balancing.
Mr. Byrne, I'm sorry, just for the sake of time, I'm sorry. I've got very little time here, and I don't want to hold it up. Let me make it clear then. If I had two bank accounts, right, and the money that's filling that bank account comes from one check, I put all this funding into one account, account A, and then I have another account, account B, but it all comes from one check. Now, what I was trying to make a point is, did you use that check, I mean, the main source of funding, which is called the general fund, did you place it into the account that was created in the Public Law last year, and then make a payment from there out? Because that's what the law said. Money shall be deposited into this account, and then from this account, it shall be paid out to the claimants, and then federal government money coming into reimbursable shall go into this account. And then once this funding is in this account, there is no transfer authority that the government has, the governor has, to take money out. So how is it that this account is a negative $3,000 in the first place, when there's no transfer authority, when money was supposed to go in? And you're explaining to us, you know, going roundabout that, oh, all money comes from the general fund, yes, we know that, but was really there money set into this account? My concern, Mr. Byrne, is whatever law, whether it's this bill or any of the law that we put through, I mean, we saw what happened through the RISE Act, that the administration is not going to do what we asked. And there should be an investigation whether DOA followed the law. Did they put money into this account? Did reimbursement come from the federal government, go back into that same account? So it's real simple, and in layman's terms, not just for me, but those who are listening, because they're trying to figure this out too, just as much as I. I'm getting texts, asking questions, and asking, can you please tell, Mr. Byrne, to make it simple, did they put money into this account that created the war claims account in the 35th Guam Legislature? Did they put money in there from the general fund? First question, yes or no?
Senator...
And just, Mr. Byrne, did you put funding into this account? That's all I'm asking, yes or no?
May I answer the question?
Yes or no?
The legislation didn't require us to put money into the account. It required us to put money into the fund.
Okay. When you received the reimbursement from the federal government, did you put it back in, did you put it into the War Claims Fund? Yes or no?
Yes. When we got money back, we put it back into the fund.
Is there any money in that account right now?
Is there any money in the fund or the account?
The account.
What?
That created it, that the law 35...
There is no money in the fund.
Okay, so, Mr. Byrne, the way I see it is that this money that you paid out these war claims came from the general fund, didn't come from an account, because the federal government that paid you back, paid you, reimbursed you for what we put out, did not go into this claims account that was created in Public Law 35, but instead reimbursed somewhere, somewhere else that you took the money. So my next question is, where did you get the funding to pay out the war claims in the 35th, when we created the... in the 35th, when we created the public law 35 dash war claims bill? What monies did you use? Did you take it from fire department? Did you take it from Medicaid? Did you, where did you use, take that money from?
Let me be quite clear, Senator. Since I've been a DOA, we have not used special fund money for the payment of any obligation that should have been the obligation of the general fund. Indeed, it's generally the other way around at the moment. And the general fund is having to subsidize some other funds, as you knew, because we spoke about that in the budget.
So where did you get the funding from? What, where did you pull it from?
Ultimately, all the money comes from the general fund. That's, that's why it's called a general fund.
Mr. Byrne, every year, the legislature budgets funding for different agencies, departments, programs. There's nothing that says, this is set aside for the governor to use. She has transfer authority. So my question is, where did you, what funding did you use to pay out these war claims? 12 point some million?
Well, the authorization surely was in the bill that created the fund. It comes from the general fund. It can't come from anywhere else.
So you're not going to answer my question, that's fine. You're not going to answer it, Mr. Byrne, then, you know, this is why this bill should be thoroughly thought out. Thoroughly. And we should implement the rules and regulations on this, because this becomes another RISE Act. There should be accountability in this law. Instead of rushing this bill through with just let the governor do it, it's going to be an issue later on, because it's obvious, there's no accountability. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know I met with time.
Thank you, Senator Taidegui. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Byrne, this legislation has passed in this, this session. The 30 days to implement a plan will bring us to about November, about November, mid, mid part November. How soon do you think the first check would go out to the recipients?
You know, it's, it's hard to say, because we don't know the circumstances of the individual claims. These claims won't be scrubbed like the previous claims were, because they went through the federal process. You know, but we will certainly try to get out claims as quickly as possible, and I would hope within the month. We've been relatively successful getting out claims for the Rental Assistance Program. And that's a really complicated program, because we have to get a whole lot of information from a whole lot of different sources. But, you know, in, in this case, assuming that we got clean claims and we can follow the, the claim through, and that might be more difficult for, for families and survivors, we, we certainly want to get them out as quickly as possible.
And, and that's my concern, is that, you know, I think they waited 78 years already too long, so I, I think processing, getting it through would be the utmost importance, and thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much. I, I I kind of don't even know what to ask, because it looks like we're providing a bill that really doesn't have the structure. We're expecting the administration to come up with a plan to implement, and then we're not providing any direct funding to do it, and yet we want to say we've accomplished something for our war survivors. So I, I don't think at this point, I don't think there's anything more that our Director of Administration can elaborate, or kind of putting you at a disadvantage here to answer questions that we ourselves are not putting into the legislation to help facilitate this process. So I do thank you for your time in answering our questions this afternoon, but we kind of put you at a disadvantage with regards to how this bill's been formulated. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Shelton, you're recognized. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, and thank you to the panel that's here to answer our questions. I would like to yield my time to Speaker Tulahi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Perez has yielded her time to Speaker Tulahi. Madam Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I share the concerns with my colleagues about, you know, we had a law, it was very clear, there was supposed to be money transferred into this War Claims Fund. That money was supposed to be used to pay out the claims that had already been adjudicated by the Department of Justice, War Claims Commission. So they just told us the amounts, and we, the government of Guam, paid it out using the funds that were supposed to be transferred into the War Claims Fund. The problem is that the other part of the law that says that the Treasury is then going to reimburse the government of Guam, and that all that money reimbursed is going to go into the War Claims Fund. That didn't happen. So either, you know, you, you keep talking about a deficit, so there's only one of two things that happen, either, first of all, the transfer, I mean, the reimbursement didn't get deposited into War Claims Fund, but you've testified that it did, and you are under oath, or that the money didn't get transferred into the War Claims Fund. And it was supposed to be transferred there, and I know that there's been several questions as to, to find out where was it transferred from. That, there's no record of any transfer. There's no record of any amounts that were placed into that fund. But I do want to know, when was the reimbursement made? Do you know the date of the reimbursement from the Treasury?
I think I mentioned just a few moments ago, Madam Speaker, I think there were three separate reimbursements, but I do not recall
When did it first start?
Well, I don't actually recall the date, but I think it may have been March.
March of 2021?
2021.
March 2021?
March 2020.
Sorry, yeah, March 2020. And by, when we started to receive reimbursements from the Treasury, at that point, had the Treasury started to pay claims directly?
I, I don't know. I'm not really
All right, were there any-
cognizant of what they were doing.
Were there any? After we received our reimbursements, did Guam continue to make payments on war claims? Or did we then defer to the Treasury has, is what is being done right now? They are the ones paying these out.
At a point, there was an agreed crossover.
Right.
When, when they had got whatever administrative processes they needed to do under control. So we agreed to stop on a particular date, and they assumed the payments after that.
So we were only just advancing payments, because they weren't able to do that at the time. They weren't able, they weren't authorized by, they, they had a technical difficulty in paying the money out, but they had already adjudicated the claims. And so, so of course, the first concern about, you know, where is, why didn't the 12, why did they not, you know, follow the law? Because if they had followed the law, the 12 million dollar reimbursement should still be in that fund. It was very clear in our in, in the law that was passed, that the reimbursement money was supposed to remain in the fund. And we know that we have been reimbursed approximately 12 million. And it should have remained in that fund. So there would have been a little less, maybe, but there should still have been approximately that much. The other, the other issue I have is that, so, we're going to create a program by this bill, which we want to do. We want to create a program that would allow the government of Guam to pay war claims survivors and their families that missed the deadline. The Department of Justice deadline, the Congress Congressional deadline. That arbitrary one-year deadline that they set for, for filing claims for war claims. So we want to, in effect, extend that deadline. And we are, we're going to do that by this bill. But the problem really is that, you know, we don't have a plan in front of us. We're authorizing the executive branch to establish a plan of how we're going to do this. The people who did this the last time was the Department of Justice, the War Claims Commissions. They adjudicated claims. They received the confidential information. They received, and, you know, were entrusted to do that, and, and, and to adjudicate it. So it's not as simple as I think, you know, just seeing if you're eligible for something through a yes or no checkbox. It's a, you know, they were writing stories of what happened to them. And these commissions were considering them on a case-by-case basis. And so, without the plan in front of us to tell us who will adjudicate those claims, we are, the legislature is pretty much, you know, giving that authority up and saying, you decide who will adjudicate war claims. Who will adopt the forms that you're going to use? Who will decide the amounts that you're going to pay? Who will ensure the confidentiality? And we want this plan to be made within 30 days. You know, I, I like the, the deadline, 30 days. Mr. Byrne was telling us earlier that, you know, it might, it might take a while, because they have other things that are, might be priority, but I like the 30-day deadline, that we're going to get the plan in 30 days. We've also put a deadline in this bill on the legislature to act within 30 days. It's, it says that if we don't act within 30 days, the plan shall be deemed adopted. I, I just have a small problem with that, because the 30-day, if they submit it, you know, right around a session time, we will not be able to get it back into the next session within 30 days. Right? And it will be default adoption. So I just think that, that, that kind of system can be manipulated. It, it would be safer to say 45 days, so that if we want to change that, that implementation plan, we will be able to do that. We have no issue with trying to implement our program. I just think that this is something that we really should be able to know all the details as much as possible, because we have seen that despite our great efforts to pass laws that we are going to, you know, hold the executive branch accountable, they are finding ways to, you know, maneuver around them. And so that's why we don't have the 12 million in the, in that fund at this day. But we want to extend this deadline. And we want to extend this deadline because we know there are people who missed that deadline, who were not able to. We were expecting, or the federal government was expecting, not only that we pay it out of our Section 30 funds, war claims, they were expecting that our manamko and their families were going to be able to find the documents they needed, to prepare the forms that they needed, to get up the, you know, some of them had not talked about these issues their entire lifetime since the war. And for good reason. And so they had to bring themselves to do that, or be urged to do that. And then we had to find convenient ways for them to do that, and to assist them. And, and I think, you know, we're going to open this claims period up again, that we as a government, I'm hoping the implementation plan will, will include, you know, how we're going to help them to file these claims. And I want to commend again that the independent Guam, the University of Guam, some of our senatorial offices, the governor's office, some of the mayors, assisted these people in, in preparing their actual claims documents. And it was hard, because we had to urge them to talk about these things that, that was really very difficult to talk about. The bill requires that we, you know, because there's no money in the fund, we're going to again, again, allow the governor to transfer some sums as may be available to her for the purposes outlined in this article. When the transfer occurs, because we've already appropriated it, I'm sure everybody would want to know where this, which appropriations this transfer might, might interfere with, or, you know, touch. You know, or are we transferring out of excess Section 30 funds that we received from reconciliation, or, or are we, you know? And I just think that's fair, you know, and I, I don't think it's written tight enough to get that based on the answers that we've received today. But I'm just going to ask that in good faith, that's what we want to see, when the money is transferred into that account to pay for it, then if, if that is the same money that we just finished appropriating in the budget bill towards agencies or some other programs, that we get to see which of those agencies or programs are affected by that transfer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Nelson? Senator Duñez?
This is Mozzie, Mr. Chairman, since I think we're in the common period of devaluation, I, I do not dismiss, and I share concerns that we seem to have identified an accounting issue. And I think that's something that members of this body should write to the public auditor and have him reconcile the process under which the account was established, and the process under which the public law that enabled the advancement of the general fund to expedite the anticipated reimbursement, and what that process was supposed to be. I think that's the cleanest way to answer that question. Going forward, this bill wants to pay out the claims extending the period. Now, if we are concerned, because we can amend this bill right now, after we're done with this process, in the committee of the whole, if we are concerned with the structure, then we can say pursuant to the design that was implemented under the federal guidelines. We can set that parameter that the governor has to work with. That's the prerogative of this body. But I want to be clear, I think it's important that we understand when this whole process started, on the federal level, there had to be a plan. You had to send a plan on how this was going to be executed. So just like when you build your house, you know, you're, you're not picking out the fixtures before you establish your floor plan and your foundation and everything else you're doing, you start with the plan. So I challenge us, who are concerned with this, when it comes to the amendment portion, that we get to work then on a structure that we would see on how the plan would go forward. But we need a plan. This plan now calls for the governor to submit a plan to the legislature that can be amended, that can be adjusted, that can be worked on. I also suggest that we get serious about this, that we don't have to wait for a session, Mr. Chairman. The minute that that plan's come to this House, we should immediately convene session within 24 hours, and work those 30 days if we had to, to amend, change, or move forward on implementing a plan. Because like Senator Ada said earlier, those who will be re-adjudicating their claims are counting on our alacrity moving forward if they want to see some sort of compensation, because we know the group of individuals that we're talking about here are a little bit short in time. Now, while time is not guaranteed to anyone, it's just logical that if you're aged, and if you're a survivor, the chances are every day becomes another day that you're hoping and praying. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and I wanted to close by asking, Mr. Byrne, when instructed, are you ready to marshal your resources and the team and everybody else? And even if we put in the model that said it shall be structured under which the original guidelines were put when the federal program was established, are you ready to get on with the program?
Senators, you have the ability, the power here, to amend this or frame this in whichever way you, you see fit. And obviously, the administration will follow those, those rules. At the moment, there are no rules. We can certainly sit down once empowered by this bill, which, you know, this bill deliberately, from what I can see, starts out by saying, this, this, this permits you to form a plan, and that plan will be reviewed, and if necessary, amended by the legislature. And that seems to me a, a fine way to go. The federal plan basically had two, two points, right? You either were entitled to a 10,000, or most people, there were some that got more money, but the majority of people either got a $10,000 payment or a $12,000 payment, depending upon the criteria that they set. It wouldn't, we would certainly start there. This legislature could amend that and, and provide some other guide points or fulcrum points, but we would certainly start with the, what we know of the existing federal plan. That seems to me to be the fairest, because we really don't want to set up a program that's different for different classes of survivors, other than that which the, the federal government decided was fair. So I, I, you know, if I were to sit down with a clean sheet of paper and, and start to formulate that plan, that's where I'd start. If, and I think that's, I hope that's what you're asking, because that's what I would want to do.
That is what I'm asking. Mr. Chairman, I mean, it only stands to reason, right? Why would we change the game? What we're trying to do is, we're trying to establish a local program, which we probably should have done from the beginning, since we're spending our own money. But we didn't. The feds did it for us. So why would we change? We've already got the blueprint. Everybody who applied for the original war claims act that they got, applied under a very set of guidelines to be able to do that. We're extending eligibility for those who missed. I don't see any reason why we would change. It doesn't seem like we have to act like we're going to the moon here. It seems like we could easily adopt the guidelines and the parameters established by which those other individuals painstakingly sat down and put together their claims going forward. And this body can do that by amending this bill, to have the governor understand the structure under which we desire for the plan to be put together, send it back to us, and call session right away. We don't have to wait for a session time or anything else. We can work as fast as we want to work, if that's our desired outcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Moynihan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Burns. You know, we're, we're kind of discussing things about amending a plan and adopting different things, and not sure if we're agreeing to this plan or not. And, but, but that comes later, right? That's item number two. Item number one is, I, I think if you can agree, if you can state so, that the governor is looking forward to implementing or providing the legislature with a plan. Is that correct?
That's correct, Senator.
Right? And alls we're doing is saying, "Go for it," Governor, and following the federal requirements that we've already practiced and have proven to work. As you mentioned, with a blank sheet of paper, that's where you would start. Correct?
Yes, sir.
Then, and she only got 30 days to do it, because, you know, we're, we're, people are getting older. And then that has to come back to the legislature. And then we can talk about, where's this money going to come from? How is these things going to happen? Maybe we don't like the plan, we're going to reject it, we're going to amend it, we're going to turn it upside down, beat it all up, and then turn it back to her, or, or just go for it. We don't know. We just want to see what the governor has in plan. And, and that's all, all we're asking to do. And in addition, of following how the procedure went with 3561, and also authorizing the governor to transfer these funds. And those questions, then, and then later, the reimbursement through the federal government with war claims, oh, I'm sorry, with Section 30 money? And just us administering it? Right now, allowing the federal government to administer this plan for us costs the government of Guam money. Is that right, Mr. Burns?
Well, only, only the administrative money, basically, that we spent trying to catch up with the federal government.
Yes, but the federal government is also charging us to get those checks out.
I don't know, as I say, I don't know enough, as I met earlier, as I said earlier, exactly how they're, they're recording their life, their costs.
Okay. So anyway, going, going back to the bill, the one in charge, or who's going to implement this, is the governor, is the governor of Guam. And what is the governor of Guam going to do? He's going to implement a plan locally for these war claims to, given to the victims that, that have missed the deadline. And where is this going to be done? Not in DC, it's going to be done on Guam. And how soon is it going to be done? They got 30 days from the time we implement this. Just to give us a plan, not to start the procedure, just to give the legislature a plan for us to review, adopt, reject, amend, up to us at that point. We, we don't know. It may, wow, if it's a perfect plan, I doubt, but if, we still have a opinion that we can put in at that time, right? So the amount of claims that will be paid, it's, it's specified in the federal plan. Hundreds of claimants have missed the deadline. Mr. Burns, it sounds like your team is ready to go and implement as soon as everything is all settled, you know?
Well, Senator, I'm sure everyone will agree, this is long overdue and, and a really important issue to try and solve. Like you say, some of these survivors probably don't have too many days left, and we want to try and make sure that whatever they suffered, we can, you know, money is only a very small part of compensating for them for, for the suffering. But that's how we've chosen, and then the federal government also has chosen to do it. So we don't want to waste any time in making sure this plan gets into operation, any more than any other plan, you know, which, which we have been tasked to plan and implement over the, over the past 12 months. But, you know, this one, the clock ticks faster, if that's not a contradiction in terms.
And when this plan is, is agreed to by the legislature, after we get it from the governor, then we're looking at Section 30 funds, right? First, we got to see the plan, then the Section 30 money comes into place. Funding source, therefore, is, is what, Mr. Burns?
Well, that's, that's what the governor has suggested, that, that the legislature, and it's your decision, senators, where the money comes from, and, you know, you've got to consider, like the speaker was saying, if there are any other programs that the money should be removed from and, and attached to this. That doesn't seem to be an easy decision, but if, that's part of your job, right, is to take that decision. But the governor has suggested that the first source to be looked at is Section 30 funds.
Which I agree with, Mr. Burns, because obviously, that's how we've been doing it thus far, for those that have received their, their payments from the atrocities that happened. It came out as Section 30 funds. The governor's looking at Section 30 funds. I don't see why we wouldn't be doing the same if we just opened this up. But first, we must see the governor's plan, bring it to the legislature, and then we can argue if we're going to move forward or not. This is just authorizing the governor. But I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. That is the end of round two. I believe, Senator Shelton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you can just clarify, that was the end of round two, and we're now in the comment period? I asked, I'd like to ask, Mr. Chair, for us to recess till tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Yes, thank you. I was about to suggest that, because the third round is set aside for comments as well as amendments. And from the discussions we've heard so far on the floor, it sounds like there may be some people with amendments. So, Madam Speaker?
Yes, notwithstanding the rules, could I just ask one more question to Mr. Burns? And that, I'll state the question, it's just, is the Section 30 source of funding that we are talking about, was that appropriated in the FY22 budget bill?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We are at the end of round two. We will recess until tomorrow at 10:00 AM to... 9:30. We will recess until tomorrow at 9:30 to begin round three.